Welcome, we're meeting in person next time and we'll do a little longer. Happy for you to for us all to meet some more than so welcome. Alright, so I think we're on to item C, public discussion of anything not on the agenda. I don't know if we've got the other members of the public. If doesn't look like it, so we will move on to item D, certificate of appropriateness. The first one is, oh, we have filed case numbers now, Jessica, is this? I'm just gonna say 424 Summit Street until I get used to reading those.
Yeah, you don't have to read the case numbers. They are there. They'll be on all of our our staff reports and our certificates of appropriateness and everything that we put out. So we can kind of keep track of that a little better and then you guys know that we've had, you know, that many applicants. Okay, I'll share my screen. Think. It always shows me two options. That's why I don't know for some reason. Just a second, let me. Position you guys all here. Okay, 424 Summit Street is in the Summit Street Historic District. This is a fascinating house because it was owned by the same family since the 1940s and had not been occupied for quite a long time. In fact, when the historians did the site inventory forms, they couldn't see this house. It was covered by trees, so they didn't describe a style. It is very clearly a shingle style house and one of the few that we have in town. Some of the hallmarks of that are the fact that, of course, it has some shingle siding, which it does not have to be all of it. So the fact that we have lap siding in the lower area is normal. The kind of exaggerated huge front facing gable, the many bay projections. And also the fact that really this house is an L shape with this front facing gable and a side facing gable in the back. And then this gable is just an added extension gable. The fact that they have those weird intersections is also a hallmark of this style. It actually forms a valley in a place that's not normal, but it's a main part of the style. I didn't include the north side photo in in the slide presentation. You have it in the packet, so you can look at, you know, more of the architectural details. So the applicant has, this is an extensive rehab and remodel, and so there are lots of parts. And so I'll look at, look at these separately. The first part is the demolition and reconstruction of the rear porch, and that's how we look at this. Once the whole thing needs to be removed, we evaluate it for its demolition and then we approve the new thing that takes its place. Frequently, we would just look at that solely as an addition on the house, and so that's why the staff report is written that way. When it's a demolition and reconstruction of something that is historic, we can just approve some more exceptions to it. So right now, you see, it's a one story fairly flat roofed, but it's a hip roof because you can see that the gutter goes all the way around. I'm assuming was an open porch that was added probably about the time that that family bought the house in the 1940s. I found reference to some creation of storage in this area, so at some point it was partially enclosed, as you can see, and then the skirting became B board to create storage below. I don't know specifically how it looked, but but there are some basic sport porch details that are part of the guidelines that we will follow with this. But as you can see, it has kind of this area that would be a balustrade that's solid with lap siding. There would be a column, a column and a column, very low overhang, like our guidelines request. This addition basically is set in from the corners of the house, the amount of the eve overhang, which is convenient. So copying that condition will also follow the guidelines for a new addition as well. One of the things I talk about in the staff report is the fact that for Summit Street, we have a guideline that disallows adding the addition to a back of the house if that makes the house extend further than 125 feet from the street. And this is in order to preserve the rear yards on on these houses. So for this one, what I'm showing you here is the aerial picture. This dimension is to the edge of the porch, and I wanted to show you this because of the fact that in the like map view that we use, the porch is not in there. So we can't really dimension to it. So the porch we know is about in this location. This dimension is to about the roof edge. And so then when I switch to the map view, keeping the same dimensions in place, you can see they don't fully align. We can't use the Johnson County Property Information Viewer as the the marker for where property lines are. So it's always kind of sort of correct. So if we were doing an addition on a house and they were like really close to that 125 feet, we would get into it a little bit more. What I wanted to show you here is that basically the rear of the house is about the 125 feet. The existing porch is about 130, 131 feet to that point. At the same time, this is an existing and historic porch that we would be rebuilding. And so staff would recommend allowing an exception to that guideline that prevents the additions from extending further in the back. Because basically what we're doing is rebuilding something that already exists. Okay, so the proposal is then to reuse a screen door. This is has glass in it, but I'm sure that there's a screen panel to insert in there. Basically, the the stairs would be reused. It would need a new railing, and so that would require a railing that meets the guidelines with posts, a top rail that extends between the posts instead of going over them, and then square spindles, which we also spell out in the staff report. So the sketch is showing same footprint, same height off the ground, basically the same kind of solid balustrade. Did we lose somebody? We just lost Maeve, right? No, Maeve's there. Did we lose a commissioner? Do we still have a forum? Yes. So anyway, what the applicant wants to do then, instead of making it partially enclosed like it is with storm windows now, is to turn it into a screen porch. And so you can see here that there's screening. This is showing a small shed roof, but I think that making it a some form of a hip roof, if that can still happen, would be the best case. The most important thing here is that this house has a very fancy kind of canted out belt course that makes the transition from the lap siding to the shingle siding. And so the most important thing on this porch and its roof is that if the current roof did not impact that line on the house, the new roof should not either. They should leave it as it is. You also see that currently this is showing supporting the porch on posts. We have approved some rear porches with posts in the past. That's kind of what's going on with the existing porch as well. I do talk in the staff report about the fact that the guidelines would suggest that the the foundation on any addition matches the existing foundation, and that would carry over into a porch. On this house, I think the foundation is like a rough, a rough cut block, a concrete block with a rock face. And the porch actually has brick piers. Staff's not recommending at this point replicating that brick pier in the rear porch, partly because the existing porch doesn't have that. I guess I don't know if that's an alteration to this porch or not. But also the piers here would be pretty tall because grade is pretty far down. It's like at least four feet. And so at this point, staff is recommending approving the idea of piers that will sit under the the rim joists. There will be a break here. They won't continue all the way through like the sketch shows. But if the commission feels differently and wants to approve brick piers to match the front porch instead, you'll just need to alter the recommendation. This shows kind of the end view. Again, it'll be a screen porch instead of having a little storm window in there. Skirting will be required, so built like a porch will have the floor, will have the rim joists, and then we'll have our our pier or post, and then there will be skirting to fill this space below. I wanted to show a few things because I talked about them in the staff report. Right now, you cannot see partly because it's enclosed where the freeze board would be on this porch, but I'm assuming it's either this piece or in here. And I just wanted to point out that's this kind of beam that circles the structure of the porch roof and is supported by the columns. And so any porch would have that. Here's skirting. Again, it always has a frame. So some of these just basic details would be required in this porch. Of course, another discussion in the staff report is matching columns or not. Rear porches are not required to match all of the details of front porches. This clearly does not the existing porch. And so staff does recommend just a simple square column. A true six inch by six inch column can be achieved by wrapping dimensional lumber with cedar, and that's frequently what we recommend, and that's what we have recommended here as well. Sorry, somebody was entering the meeting. I had to figure out how to do that. Okay, so that was one part of the project is the demolition and reconstruction of the porch. I'm getting a weird message from Zoom, so I'm trying to see what that might be. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Anyway. Yeah, it doesn't. Okay, so another part of the project is the removal of this modern entrance to the basement. This is not a matter of a typical cellar door that was converted. This is a stand up entrance to the basement. It's no longer needed. It is clearly modern. It is a distraction and something that could really be approved to be removed by staff and chair because of the fact that it's not considered historic. But we, that is included in the project. The foundation would be patched to match the existing, as would be the the water table, the drip edge and the siding. Another part of the project is this. We have two stairs, two windows, a small thick sash and a small double hung or single hung. I can't tell by looking at it that were originally in the rear stair. I'm assuming the rear stair was removed as part of the interior project. But instead of normally when a window is not needed, but part of the historic window patterning, we often have the applicant leave the window in place and then seal it shut, put black glass in the in the glass, in the sashes, and then wall it over on the inside. It'll remain on the outside. We do that frequently for bathrooms where people put showers, but it's, you know, we want to retain the window because it's part of the window patterning on the house. In this case, these windows are a little unusual. Again, this architectural style does have some unusual windows. But the, we approach the applicant with the idea of maybe retaining a window in this location instead of removing both of them. And they do agree to take the double hung window and move it down. And of course, it would need, you know, this crown and the same head trim, but it would be moved down so that it would align with the head of the adjacent window around the corner. So there would still be a window there. It would just basically be a window with a raised sill. So it would be in basically like this general area instead. So staff does recommend approval of that as well. There is some work on the roof. I looked into the history of this, and of course, as a shingle style, this house would have had originally wood shingles for its roof. I'm not sure about the porch in particular, but by the 1930s, all, all three areas, the main roof, the porch roof, and actually the rear porch roof all had metal roofing, and that was all removed. And so now they have an asphalt shingle here, which is appropriate. This is the type of shingle that we would approve for a house like this. And they would like to replace this EPDM, which is an elastomeric membrane, with shingles to match the roof. Often with front porches, they have this kind of membrane because it's a very low slope. This roof has a higher slope than many of them that you will see, and so staff does recommend approval of that. If that was the only part of this project, it could be approved by staff. One of the things that'll need to happen because this membrane turns up underneath the shingles is that some of these shingles are going to have to be removed to remove that, to flash the new shingles properly. And then because they will likely be damaged from that, they will have to be replaced. I think it's pretty obvious. You can see that the bottom two strips are just slightly more snaggletooth than the rest of the wall. And so I I think that it's kind of obvious that you can see that they had to do that kind of work when they put this current roofing on. There's an internal gutter here on the front porch. Here's one of the downspouts, and it will also need to be repaired, which is part of the project. Finally, we have some windows that will have their sashes replaced. Staff has reviewed the condition of all those windows and agrees that they are deteriorated. It looks like from the applicant's statement that only one window that's currently a, and it's actually a replacement window. That's the only one where the window, the entire window will need to be replaced. All the rest are sashes. With this special triple window here in the front gable, it is deteriorated. It is one of those windows that could not be really replicated well in a common, you know, metal clad window. And so this one will be removed, the frame will be repaired, and new sashes will be created as necessary. I'm assuming because they're going to be actually making that if that if they find anything that's repairable, they'll just keep that because it'll be less work. So basically, that's the project we have here. Everything meets the guidelines with the exception of allowing the porch to be rebuilt, even though it extends more than 125 feet into the, well, from the street into the yard, and allowing them to build the the porch with the piers as more similar to what is existing. So the current recommended motion just includes adding skirting and submitting the window product for the sashes and the one one replacement window.
All right, I'm not right, I'm on mute. Okay. So now, just that we have some new commissioners, now's the time where we kind of ask just clarifying questions for Jessica, maybe something she said that you wanted to understand better. We're trying to refrain from discussions. We have the public, among the commissions, we have the public hearing. So if there's any clarifying questions for Jessica, now's now's the time.
I have one.
Yep.
Jessica, just to clarify, on the front, the windows and the three window sashes in the front gable, will those merely be replaced with new sashes, but they'll still retain the same division of of windows, right?
Yeah, there, as as far as I know, they are going to rebuild anything that needs rebuilding on this set of windows in wood, and it will match the existing.
Okay, and is the middle window a fixed sash or is does that, will that be also one with the?
No, I, you know, I have photos and the applicant can answer this, but I believe that these are actually all casement windows. I I can't remember if there's a casement and two double hungs or if they're all three casements. But we can, he's on mute.
Well, let's just, let's see.
And we'll wait, Ben, what, let's wait until.
Ben, Ben, this is Kevin. We're gonna, we're gonna make sure there's any other clarifying questions, and we'll open the hearing and have you have fun. So just give us one second, and I think we're probably ready to go, but I just want to make sure we're doing it the right order. Do we have any other kind of clarifying questions for Jessica?
Yeah, on that rear window that they want, you want to lower, are you going to put black glass over that then when it's lowered, or will it be a functioning window?
I'm, he can answer that again, but I'm assuming that it would be able to be a functioning window. The reason for removing them initially was the fact that they were just going to be at these odd levels. You know, not aligning with normal windows in the room.
Okay.
Okay, I just wondered about that. All right.
Any other questions for Jessica? All right, if not, we'll open the public hearing. This is the time for someone who, the property owner or someone who represents them to speak. You are not required to, but now is the time to do it if you'd like.
So Ben, you can go now if you want.
Okay, I think the only two questions were the third level, those, the only, the operable sashes are on the outside. The middle one is a fixed window and the other one, we're going to replace, we're going to fix the upper sash or double hung window that is in place and lower it, obviously, it will be like above a bar, pantry bar area, so it can be, it will be functional and not covered with black glass or drywall.
Is there anything else you'd like to add? You're welcome to. You don't, you're not obligated to.
No, I think we're all set.
Any other commissioners have questions for Ben? All right, sorry, go ahead.
It's Ben here. So I do have a question. I'm the one, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, this is Mary. I'm with Towel. I'm the one that would be doing the roofing. And the gutters and possibly, you know, some of the colors that are on the outside. It appears, you know, trying to match some of the existing paint, you know, might run into a problem, so we would have to paint everything. Is there something we're wanting to keep everything in the same color line, or are we okay with changing any of that?
Mary, we don't regulate paint, so that can be done. The only thing that we do regulate is masonry, and we do not allow the painting of masonry. So the, you know, the front porch piers, the foundation, those things could not be painted, but everything else, the house can be any color.
So on the the porch itself, we will be, you know, we we will be, underneath that is the tin, so you're mentioning underneath, you know, what it was at one point, and then they put the rubber over the top. So that is still, the metal is still there, the tin is underneath. And so if we do the shingles, we will have exposed flashing because you have to, you know, per roofing code and standards. Is that going to be a problem, you know, at that edge where you see the cedar shake, you will have a little bit of a a chat, you know, because it's it's raised right now with that rubber roof. So I didn't know, you know, I mean, being that it's code, are you objecting to having something, you know, a certain color trying to match something? I guess I know you're saying it doesn't matter on any color at all.
So generally, we understand that the wood shingles on the wall need to be held back from the roof. You know, there's, there's some space that needs to happen there. Any flashing should be a color that blends with the house.
That'll blend, yeah.
Um, you know, we don't want anything that's like shiny metal. We don't want anything that's bright white if there's not other white on the house, that kind of thing. So that's understood. We just want it, you to keep it as tight as it can possibly be, especially because of the fact that the shingles are probably the most important part of this house.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then last is on, they do have some box gutters. Are are you objecting to changing those styles to like the regular, you know, gutter, you know, it's it's becoming, you know, harder and harder to get certain materials right now, and box gutters is one of those items that we're not really seeing very much of, so.
I guess I need to know exactly what you are referring to with box gutters.
Okay. If you go to the picture of the front of the house, they're a little bit more square.
Are you talking about?
No, it's right on the porch. So if you look right at the front, you're not going to really see much of a difference, but it's, it's just these particular ones are, you know, box gutters, the insurance company. This is in regards to a claim that I'm working on. I'm still negotiating that portion of it because I didn't pay the right, you know, items on that, the costs that would be associated with it. But they are just a little bit like, they're more looking like a box rather than if you look at a regular house, they're the the shape that they are, they're just, they're just a square rather than a little bit of an arch on them.
So my understanding is that this porch has internal gutters so that there's a wood fascia, some wood crown molding or something, and a wood soffit, and that there's a metal pan that's probably filled with the EPDM inside. And so none of the wood would be able to change. It would all.
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't change any of the wood. There is some gutter screens that are in there, just regular gutter screens that kind of sit on the top.
Yeah, anything that is inside the pan, you know, like the, the, originally, it was a tin pan, and then there's some brackets that hold it up off of the base of the soffit. Anything that's in there doesn't matter to us as long as it functions properly. It's the exterior wood components of the internal gutter and the fact that the roof has internal gutters and that they function, those are the parts that we keep.
Okay, okay, that that's all I needed.
Yeah, all of the external regular gutter gutters like these K styles, we don't regulate those, so those could all be changed.
Okay.
Same as the half round that's on the rear porch that does not have to be that way. It can be.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, can I make a comment about the the gutters?
Yeah.
We have them at our house on our, on our second level, and we use EPDM rubber on the gutters themselves and singled over to the edge of them, which has been a really pretty effective solution. And you can always reach out if you'd like about the contractor we went with, but I'd be happy to send photos if you're interested.
Just putting the EPDM over, you're saying?
Um, well, after you've kind of stripped the material off the roof.
Yeah.
EPDM over is just the gutter, the kind of the recessed gutter itself. If I'm, if I, if I'm understanding.
It's ice and water typically, because that would be a code, you know, that, you know, you can use different products, but ice and water is typically, if we go to shingles, we're putting ice and water right there underneath that area, which goes over.
Okay, all right.
Even in our guidelines, it talks about a standard repair for 100 year old internal gutters. It's not a good long lasting repair, but something that happens a lot, and Jordan, it should last you a pretty long time really, is to just line the pan with EPDM. You can do that, or you can remake the pans. You know, they're not going to be made in tin, but they can be remade in other metals, so.
We've done both, and so I do have, I have a lot of information. I'm happy to provide. I mean, it's, it's, it's been an interesting project.
Yeah, our, our issue is just trying to get materials. We've been running into, you know, some of that right now. So that's where, I mean, it could just be delayed on certain items, but I'm not too worried, you know, on that, so.
May I say something too on that? We did our interior gutters over about, I don't know, 15 years ago, 12 years ago. And there is a product which is approved by the National Trust, which we used, which I subsequently learned is available in Iowa. Our carpenter could give you all the details on that if you're interested. But he put a sort of a coating over the the plywood roof and over the rebuilt interior box. And we only have to put another coat on about every three years or four years, and it's wonderful. and we only have to put another coat on about every three years or four years, and it's wonderful stuff.
Yeah, that might be interesting to see what that is that you're referring to.
I'll give Jessica the information if you're interested in talking.
Yeah, that would be really nice. That would be good. Because they are good, you know, that's a good system, you know, so that's where I'm kind of running into a little bit just of availability of materials right now. So, but yeah, that would be great.
And it comes in colors.
Good, good.
Great. Any other questions for Mary? Or comments, suggestions, I guess, that's kind of where we're at right now?
No, I'm good.
Great. Any other members of the public would like to speak on this? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commission conversation, discussion among ourselves. Jessica, is it possible for us to see each other, or do you want to not do that?
I don't mind if you, if you want.
Yeah, I think it's helpful to be able to, I just, if I'm trying to, if folks have any questions, it's just hard for me to see where folks are. Any question? Thoughts? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
I'm look, I'm just looking for my packet and my face again, and then I'll be happy to make a motion.
Okay. Maybe we could start showing the screen, Jessica, again, now that I know that no one needs to talk.
I have it.
Okay, go ahead.
My first motion. So I move to approve a certificate of appropriateness for the project at 424 South Summit Street as presented in the staff report with the following conditions. Framed porch skirting is installed between the rear porch piers, and window product information is approved by staff.
Nice job, Margaret. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Kuntzly seconds.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, guys. All right, we're on to the certificate appropriateness at 718 Oakland Avenue.
See, I muted everybody and then forgot to unmute myself. 718 Oakland is in the Longfellow Historic District. It is right here. Here's a photo of the house. It's a very standard two-story side-gabled house, through-wall dormer is what this is called. There's a defined belt course here at the sill line for those windows. A small, but what they would consider affordable porch. This is supposed to be a affordable-type home, and so, you know, it gives you the porch without it being full-size. This is a modern chimney. It's metal. The applicant would like to remove this chimney, which is on the back half. Here you can see it a little bit better. It's a very standard chimney. It is not used. This pipe coming out of it is not used anymore. Here it is from the alley. Again, it's just a standard chimney. The property owner provided photos from the inspection. The reason for their removal is the fact that it is not used. It is standard. Staff at least does not feel that it's a significant part of the architecture on this home, and it is damaged to the degree it will need to be completely rebuilt, at least above the roof in order to keep it. Staff would assume that that would be limited to something that is more architecturally significant. You know, for instance, even if this was a craftsman bungalow, those tend to have chimneys. They tend to be in the same location. This house is not like that. It's not an exposed chimney. This last picture is showing the damage inside. It's, there are holes in the packet. I think that I gave you the information that also shows that you can see daylight through the chimney and the surrounding roof area as well. Probably around the flashing here. And so this is just simply one of those cases where staff recommends approval to remove this specific chimney.
All right, any clarifying questions for Jessica? All right, hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. I don't know if you have any property owners here. If you are, you're welcome to speak. You do not have to. All right, any other members of the public? All right, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Commission, conversation, discussion. Just speak up if you got something to say.
I can stop sharing.
Hi, this is Deanna. Jessica, I just want to clarify, so this, you'd be taking the chimney down below the roof line and shingling over, is that correct?
Correct. This house just changed hands. The neighbor bought it, and her children will live there, and part of the inspection showed the damage to the chimney. And they do plan to re-roof the entire house next month, which they will seek separate approval. It's just three-tab shingles, so we will be able to approve the shingles as a staff review. So there would be some temporary cover for the hole, but then the whole roof would be reshingled.
Other questions, conversation? Just speak up if you can, because I can't, I can't see you coming off mute or anything.
So I, this is Deanna. Again, I do have some comments just from my own personal experience. It would probably be more helpful if the owner was on. But I know I did this very same project at my home, and we did it because we were noticing the chimney inside the house, which is plastered over. You can definitely see how it protrudes from the wall. That surface was damp, and we were concerned about water damage. It was also in very poor shape like this one toward the back of the house. And the Historic Commission approved us just getting rid of that chimney. But even today, those surfaces inside the house are still wet. It's something I'm looking into. I'm thinking maybe the brick is kind of like a sponge, and it's holding on to that moisture and just kind of letting it go over time. But I guess something to kind of keep in mind that, you know, even if the chimney is taken down, you still might have some moisture issues within the house.
And Deanna, I'll talk to the owner about that. But it is entirely possible. For this one, we know that there's some water getting in through the chimney itself that's traveling all the way down to the basement, but it's also kind of leaching out into the upper floor wall area around the chimney, as well as the damage they can see in the attic of the chimney. So I think that's the main thing there. When the chimney stays in place, one of the other things that could happen is some of the ground moisture could also leach up. If you, you know, if it's actually going down and resting all the way in the basement, depending on whether or not it has its own separate foundation. For instance, yours could have something to do with ground moisture instead of moisture that has been retained over time.
Interesting, okay.
Other thoughts or comments? If not, I'm ready for a motion if someone's ready.
I can do it.
Thank you, Noah.
Stork moves to approve a certificate of appropriateness for the project at 718 Oakland Avenue as presented in the application.
Great, do you have a second?
Sellegran, second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody. All right, on to item E, the commission information.
I have two things, and one, so everybody involved with the awards, please make sure you stay, because I have a couple things. But first, just so you're aware, we will be going to in-person meetings again in August, and they will be video-recorded and posted online as part of the new council directive. And today I was trained in that, and because we'll have a big old camera, and we have to record now, video, audio, and our past audio that we do for minutes, so it'll be kind of interesting. I just wanted to let you know that so far the plan really is to return to Emma Harvett Hall. We have, at least four of you have not been commissioners there. I, maybe what I can do, I sent myself a photo that I took. Let me see if I can bring it up. I just want you to know that we, I want to kind of talk to you about how we would sit there, very, very briefly, because I think that it may matter. So I'm gonna share my screen again. Okay, so right now you're looking at a photo I took of the seating in the council chamber. And so the way we normally do it, this lower area is in charge of recording in the computer that displays, and so I sit there. There are two seats, because some of the commissions have more than one staff member. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and a spot to put a 10th chair. And we have sat all 10 commissioners up here. I just wanted to alert you to this, because so far this is the plan, is to return to this seating. My suggestion is that, you know, it's cozy, but these are pretty big chairs. They are not flexible, so you're at least, you know, that far apart from each other. If anyone feels the need to wear a mask, please do. Nobody's gonna criticize you or think anything for that. We will make everything as safe as possible, but I just kind of wanted to show you what's going on there. Right now, there's nine of you, but soon council will appoint the 10th person, so I don't know if they'll be ready for the August meeting or not. And of course, we'll only have 10 when there's a quorum. If we actually seat all 12 members, I'm not sure what we'll do. We've never had that before, so that'll be interesting. We like it in here because it's easy to record, easy to hear, easy to see, easy all around. So that's the plan. And right now, we're going back to that in August. So we'll do the quorum check like normal and find out how many of you are gonna be there and put enough seats for everybody, and we only have to add one if you're all there, because there's nine chairs normally. So that was one. Does anyone, I mean, this is not a discussion section, but does anybody have any questions about that at all? No? Okay. The other one was the awards. Some of you are on the awards committee, and one of those people is not here. I only just found out this afternoon that we actually are on for the awards tomorrow night. I really didn't know. We did not meet any of our deadlines, including, I mean, I didn't. And so I was concerned that Ty wouldn't have enough time, and he didn't want to tell me until after they started working on it yesterday. So they were working on it yesterday and today, so it is on. I have emailed all of the property owners and the contractors who have email addresses to let them know. It will be available on the city's Facebook page, and it will also be available on City Channel 4's YouTube channel. It won't be live on City Channel 4, the TV station, but it'll be on the YouTube channel. Ty sent me an email for the Zoom invite for those who are part of the awards ceremony, and after we get off of this meeting, I will send you that email with the Zoom. So what we'll do is those who are on the committee, so that would be Cecile, Jordan, Kevin, Maeve, Larry, we'll have to get in touch with Larry, and Sherry. Maeve and Larry are part of Friends of Historic Preservation, and that's why they're involved with this. Everybody should connect a few minutes at least prior to 7:00, because it begins at 7:00. I will also connect prior. I'll probably connect 10 minutes ahead, and I'll only do that just to make sure that we have everyone, and I don't have to call somebody or, you know, come up with some change. And then I'll bow out and just watch it like normal people. The, if you recorded an introduction to your part saying, hey, I'm so-and-so, they are not going to leave that. They're gonna cut that. We want you to introduce yourself live. So it'll be basically like a filmed Zoom meeting, and you'll, you know, they'll cut to, I don't know, Maeve, and she'll say, hey, I'm Maeve. I'm an old librarian, whatever. No, she'll say her thing, and then I will cut, I'm sorry. Ty will cut to the pre-recorded video with the slides. And then when her part is done, they'll come back to the group. And it will be in the order of Kevin first, because he'll introduce, and then Maeve. And then we'll go through, and Jordan, you're doing the painting, is that correct? And then Cecile is doing the rehab, and then Sherry is doing our addition and commercial, commercial project. And I'm not sure exactly where they're going to put the video they made of the salvage barn in. I'm letting them do that. So there's a little bit of like work on the fly with this. It worked great last year. Nobody knew how to do Zoom last year. You guys are all masters now. Everyone, especially Cecile, please make sure that you're loud enough to speak into your microphone. I think I can hear everyone, except for sometimes I can't hear Cecile, and we'll work on that. If someone notices that she's too quiet, let her know. We've worked on that too. And so I think that's all. So do you guys feel good about it?
Jessica, I recorded both of the pieces for Friends, so Larry isn't in the mix. So he's one less person to be concerned about, so you don't need to email him.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, anything else?
So just to clarify, the, as presenters, it's the one, it's the one moment that we have to be ready for where we introduce ourselves, and then we're off the hook, no more stage fright.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think he'll probably show a shot of all of you in the beginning. I mean, that's the way it kind of was last year. But then, yeah, only when you say, you know, I'm Jordan with the commission, that's the only time that you actually have to speak live.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna say too. I'm Jordan with the commission, and that's it.
You have to announce your category, though?
No, I've got, I'll say more. All right.
Okay.
So, great, we're done. Commission information we've handled. That means we are ready for adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sellegran, I have moved to adjourn.
And Kuntzly seconds. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for being here.
We'll see you all tomorrow.